Commission. Item thirteen is confirmation of Mayor's reappointment of Stephanie Roos to the Planning Commission. Item fourteen is consideration of waiving the Sherman Park Pavilion user fee for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for their August first, 2025 employee picnic. Item fifteen is consideration of a contract with Sioux Pilots Association to operate the flight simulator. Item sixteen is consideration of a contract extension with Magooz for janitorial services for City Hall and the Police Department. Item seventeen is consideration of a contract extension with Metheny Lawn Service for Smart Zone Lawn Maintenance and Snow Plowing. Item eighteen is consideration of a contract extension with MTS Cleaning for Smart Zone Cleaning. Item nineteen is consideration of Smart Zone Lease Agreement with Superior Forensic Engineering LLC. And item twenty is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Manager, would any Commissioner like any of these items removed for individual consideration or any of them further explained? Commissioner Bauer?
Just a quick one. It doesn't need to be removed, but I want to be upfront that Dave Markham and his reappointment to the Planning Commission, he does work for me, so. But again, I don't think that's a conflict.
No. Very good. Commissioner Bauer?
I move that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passed unanimously. Thank you. Now we move into item E, which is Special Orders of Business. Deputy City Manager, Robin Troyer.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item for the Commission's consideration is a public hearing and consideration of an Oprah request for 538 Ashman Street. Community Development Director Freeman and interim EDC Director Nikki Toose and Kelly Freeman will present on this item.
Thanks for getting the computers set up.
I'm just kind of digging a little deeper into kind of what the 538 Oprah application request entails and why it's needed for the project to continue on forward. So Kelly's going to start and then I'm going to jump in and then we'll be open to any questions.
Yes.
Doing this on the fly here, right? So our recent event history with this property starts in March of 2021 where there was a large fire in Apartment Seven, which is the, in the top floor of the three-story section next to 538. When the fire department was in reviewing the situation post-fire, the electrical system in the residential parts of the building was deemed hazardous, so all the apartments were ordered vacated. Coed Flowers was the last tenant in the building and they moved to their current location right around Thanksgiving of 2021, leaving the building vacant without any tenants in In sometime prior to the winter of 2022, the natural gas supply to the building was shut off without any winterization of either the plumbing system or the HVAC, which led to the water meter freezing and bursting and flooding the basement of the building in 2022. Later that month in December, Holly Roberts purchased the building through her LLC. The power was cut to the remaining commercial spaces the following month in January. In March is kind of really when the rebuilding phase of the project began. The city applied for and was successful in getting a state land bank authority grant, which put a new roof on the building, which had been leaking severely in places, as well as stabilizing the second floor, which was kind of, you throw a handful of marbles down and they'd all go in different directions. In July of '23, the roof replacement was complete. And in October, brownfield tax abatement was approved by the City Commission. That will have to come off if the Oprah is approved because they can't work together. In the same month, the revitalization and placemaking MEDC grant award, which is the significant source of funding for this project, was approved by MEDC. In December, limited power back on in the building to facilitate the stabilization work. And then in winter 2024, the stabilization work was completed. So, long story short, except for the structure, this building is a basket case. It needs new electrical, needs new plumbing, cooling, heating, ventilation. Nothing that's there now is reusable. And with the existing building having been built under old colds, old codes, there's no fire suppression in it and that would be added as part of this project. Needs mason repairs, carpentry, all the doors, windows and glass needs to be replaced, all the interior surfaces. It already has had an environmental review and there is lead paint and asbestos in the building. The fire damage was, of course, never repaired because it didn't need to be with nobody living up there. And the facade would be rehabbed as well. Here are some photos. Oh, no. Were you flipping that the whole time? Thank you. You saved me. Here are some photos of the interior of the building. You can see the fire damage in the upper left. That's from that apartment upstairs on the third floor. And then just some various photos of the interior of the building. So I'll turn it over to Nikki.
All right. So looking forward, what the rehabilitation entails, so we're looking at 14,420 square feet of space that will be rehabilitated. They have a long-term lease commercial space to the Sioux Area Council, which you guys will hear from later. They're looking to lease some storage space, Sioux Theater. They'll also have additional commercial, commercial space for a new business that's looking to come to Sioux St. Marie or expand. And then 11 market rate apartments from studios to two-bedroom apartments. And then below, you'll see kind of a conceptual rendering of what the building could look like if the rehabilitation is done. So what is an Oprah? So the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, Public Act 146 of 2000 freezes the taxable value for up to 12 years on eligible projects. During that duration of the Oprah, the property continues to pay taxes, but at the pre-project rate. After the Oprah expires, property is taxed in full value indefinitely. And then just a quick note on that, this public act of 146 sunsets at the end of 2026. I think it's a great resource that is nice to have in our back pocket. So looking at the tax abatement, a policy that was approved on, in November of 2024, there's kind of the abatement schedule and where the 538 project fits in, it is 50% of this project in the capital investment. The capital investment on this project is $5.6 million. New job creation, looking at five new jobs. This includes a director for the Superior Arts Council looking to grow. The building will need a building maintenance director. And then we estimated low, three new jobs for the additional commercial space. New job wages, we just put this in the first category since we're looking at the estimates, that would be 10%. And then the new housing units created falls within 30% with those 11 units created. This puts us at a total of 110%, however, with the Oprah, we cannot exceed the 12-year allowable years from the State of Michigan and the State Tax Commission. So the total finance package, as we talked about earlier, the total project costs about $5.6 million. The contract bid came at 4.1. There are some additional charges that isn't in the contract bid, such as engineering drawings, the purchase of the building, and then some other soft costs. So the total finance package is almost $2.7 million MEDC RAP grant, and that's the revitalization and placemaking grant. A $2.1 million loan from 4Fark Credit Union, some cash equity in the building purchase from the owner herself of $609,000, and then the land bank grant of $184,000. So when we're looking at Holly's project and why there is such a need for the Oprah, it's actually because of the debt service ratio. So the bank or any financial institution and the MEDC both require a 1.2 debt service ratio, which allows them to see that they have some additional cash flow that will allow them to kind of be comfortable in approving the loan, know that the project will be viable, have a little bit of extra cash flow in case anything goes wrong. So without the Oprah, the 538 project cannot proceed to the financial institution or the State of Michigan due to 1.16 debt service ratio. With that Oprah, it jumps to 1.23. So exactly what, what is a debt service ratio? This just kind of allows the cash flow to increase. As you see in the slide, I don't know if it's big enough, but the cash flow without an Oprah is $29,000 a year, which as a business owner, you probably understand that that really isn't much fluidity to trust anything going wrong or any additional building costs that might not be entertained. And then with that Oprah, we're looking at just about $42,000. So it still isn't making a ton of money, but still allows the MEDC and the financial institution to feel comfortable in moving forward with the project. So the taxable value increase. So we did some assumptions based on a 2% value increase, which is not that great. In the past, we've seen four to 5% property value increases. So we went a little, on the lower side, just to show you guys, even if the market isn't great, we're still going to see a high jump in value to this building. So the blue line shows what would happen if the Oprah wasn't approved. The building would continue to see a 2% value increase, not really even jumping to that $100,000 value and really just increases 2% from $59,488. If approved in year 13, we would see a value increase from the construction of this building skyrocketing to $402,159.47. Any tax loss from this project would be recuperated within 10 years after the Oprah ends, and that's plus, and that is not just to the city's taxable jurisdiction, that is to all tax jurisdictions. And then Kelly, you just added this slide. I think it's a great representation of kind of what it does to the tax base in, in collecting those millages.
So right now, the current taxable value generates $984 for the operating millage and $385 for police fire pension. Just to give you a, kind of a point of comparison, this is slightly less than I pay for my house. So, right now as it sits, this building is contributing to the tax base in the same realm of a average single-family home in the city. The unapproved taxable value at year 13 only goes to $75,488. So it really doesn't, you know, the 13 years is a decent time, but the contribution, if there's no growth in the taxable value other than the 2%, really isn't remarkable at all. If the improvements occur, the estimated taxable value at year 13 is 6650 and then police fire pension is 2606, so quite a growth. And of course, that continues on that 2% trajectory for the entire life of the project once it's off the Oprah. So that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions from the City Commission, we'd be happy to do our best to answer them.
Thank you very much, Kelly and Nikki. Do you have any? Anything before we head into the public hearing? Thank you very much for the information. It's great. Okay. Commissioner Rubenstein.
Kelly and Nikki, can you, just for everyone here, define the brownfield that we initially passed in the Oprah? Because both kind of accomplished the same thing and one we already passed.
Yeah. So the Oprah, an Oprah and a brownfield tax abatement are essentially the same thing. Brownfields are allowable for up to 30 years, whereas Oprahs are only allowable for up to 12 years. And they do, I mean, they operate in the same function, except an Oprah just freezes the taxable value. They're still paying taxes at that rate, whereas a brownfield increases that value. However, that, that increased amount is reimbursed to the developer. So, like I said, they're paying the same tax amount, it's just whether you get a check back in the mail or you don't. The reason that the brownfield is not allowable in this situation is because there was quite a financial gap on this project. And so the MEDC suggested taking those activities from the brownfield plan and putting them into the grant opportunity to get the money right away, close that gap. So the gap was $400,000. This, by putting those, that $200,000 of eligibility back into the grant, that allowed them to close the gap quite a bit. But they can't, you can't double dip on tax abatements in that form because brownfields and the RAP grant are both through the MEDC, whereas the Oprah is through the State Tax Commission. So we're not double dipping with anything with the grant and the State Tax Commission.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Any other before we go to the public hearing? All right, so we will, get to the right page here. We will open the public hearing on consideration of our Oprah request for 538 Ashman. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward? And if you could, please come to the microphone and state your name and, even though we all know you.
Hello, everybody.
Welcome, Tony.
I'm here as a city resident, former business owner, former property owner, longtime DBA in the day, Downtown Business Association Treasurer, and member of the DDA when I had my properties. And we have the opportunity to make, I've got some bullet points here, but we have the opportunity to make a difference in our downtown. There hasn't been a lot of people or investors lining up looking to take this property on. It's very similar to the ZIMS project, businesses and buildings in our, in the heart of our downtown that need a lot of work. So, the building is not in good condition. Some windows have been bordered up. The apartments need major work, along with many other needed improvements to various storefronts. We have done some great things in that part of the downtown. Why not continue? Sioux Theater, Craig Cooper and family, Sioux Arts Council, Flo Riator, and Cut Above with the facade grant improvement, along with many other properties that have been on great momentum in that area. When you have an investor willing to put time, energy and money into a property that is in the middle of the downtown and needs work, we should 100% embrace them and say, thank you, thank you, thank you. This should not be an issue. It should be unanimous. We need to welcome investment and not make it difficult. The city will benefit from this. We need to look long-term with economic development, keep up the momentum with great projects that will enhance our community. I urge you to approve 538 and the Oprah project. I think it's a really needed, something that we can all be proud of if, once it gets going. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Who would like to go next? Sure.
Did you want to run a slide at all or you just wanted?
Yes, I did. My slides are.
Okay. Get through the forest.
Is it city? Oh, it's this one? This one's it?
No, it's not mine. That's Justin's, I think. That one's mine, the one that Kelly has. Oh, yeah. Okay. I should use this computer.
Are you going to stay up in here or do you want?
I can stay up here.
That would be great. Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
If you can introduce yourself, please, for the audience.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Agatha Colbert and I am the current Chair of the Sioux Area Arts Council. And I thank you all for letting me speak tonight about our, our art center. Alberta House was donated to us in 1986. The, the city then gave us a grant to make the first floor handicapped accessible. That grant was $25,000 in 1986. Since opening our doors in 1987, we have operated continuously. We have staying power, is one thing. Until 1921, sorry, did I change that? No, I don't mean to change yet. Sorry. Back to the, yeah, thank you. Stand over here. Sorry. Let's start again. Until 2021, we depended entirely on volunteers, but we now have two paid staff. And since hiring an operations manager and a social media specialist, we have grown by leaps and bounds. In anticipation of moving to 538 Ashman, we changed our name from the Alberta House to the Sioux Area Art Center with the subtitle, "A Gathering Place." And our intent was to truly make it a gathering place, which it is becoming. Next slide, please. The art center is benefiting our local community by improving people's quality of life with benefits also to the local economy. In going, I'm going to talk briefly about four obvious ways that the art center's presence benefits the people of our city. Next, please. Yeah. No, the other, oh, yes, sorry. Direct revenues come from our shop and gallery sales. Don't have a pointer. Anyhow, shop's on the two ends of this. It's a fairly small shop that sells only arts and crafts made by local artists. And as you can see, the shop is fairly small and we have an inventory that would fill a much larger area. Our gallery sales come from the monthly exhibitions. In the part, in, in the past, only local artists showed their work here. But over the last two years, artists from the Midwestern region of the United States and artists as far away as Texas and California have entered their work, giving us a high caliber of art. The Sioux Lox will always be a major tourist attraction, obviously, and a portion of those visitors are also interested in seeing and buying art. The cruise ships particularly have individuals with more disposable income and come to an art gallery to buy souvenirs representative of the places they visit, and we have local art. And by the way, that cruise ship, I live out in Brimley, that, last night, I took that picture of that cruise ship as it went by our cabin. Next one. So I would say one of our greatest strengths in, is our community engagement. We prioritize reaching out to the youth in our area. Each year, we have a student art show and invite middle schoolers and high schoolers from the Sioux schools, as well as surrounding areas, including Brimley, Rudyard and Pickford. We also have a wide variety of classes. In, in 2024, there were 64 classes offered and already, just six months into 2025, we've held 75 classes. I will tell you, I won't talk about all the programs we have, but tell you about one really exciting event, and it's the annual photography show, and it's called 484848. In June, in one weekend in June, over a period of 48 hours, 48 photographers take photographs in 48 sections of Chippewa County. And I don't know if you can see in the background there, is this, this is them choosing their sections. And we had, so this was in June and the show will be in August. And from what I understand, I've, I've entered into it and Justin also, so it's amateur photographers as well as experienced photographers. So our fourth contribution to the city, or should I say, the city's contribution to us, is the collaboration we've developed with the other cultural organizations in the Sioux. Our collaborative effort began last year as part of a grant we received from the National Endowment for the Arts. The project was called "The Sioux Collects: Art For All." And the idea was based on the observation that not, not being a large metropolitan area doesn't necessarily mean we don't have any great art. So organizations, organizations in the city and private collectors here do have some very important pieces of art. And in fact, Mayor Gary loaned us one of his pieces by a significant artist. Our goal was to try to, to, into, oh, tap into the wealth of the little-known art in our area and be able to share it with the whole community. And we were very successful in that. We had three classes and two lectures at Alberta House and the Bayless Public Library. This, we collaborated with all these institutions. Bayless Public Library, we had three classes and one lecture. And Lake State, we had a wonderful indigenous basketry session. It was a roundtable discussion. We also utilized the Chippewa County Historical Society and had something like 100 visitors for the programs that we had there. And finally, the River of History Museum, we invited the children from the Whitefish Township and they enjoyed it with, with Paul. Okay. So with, with all these activities, we have definitely outgrown our space. And Alberta House has served us well for almost 40 years, but we are ready to, for further expansion. And that is why the space at 538 Ashman is so consequential to us. The space there is about three times as big as our current space and the location is ideal with, which, because it will give us much greater exposure. And just looking at this picture of Alberta House, yes, it's a wonderful building, but where it's located is just a half a block away from the Lox, but people, even people who've lived in the Sioux all their life said, gee, I didn't know that's what that was. So we, we want more visibility and being on Ashman Street, right in the heart of the downtown, is just ideal for us. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else that would like to make any comments?
Good morning, Commissioner, good evening, Commissioner. Justin Nupper, I'm here wearing my, my personal business owner hat, I guess. I do have some financial interest in this project. I was paid in between jobs a few years ago to help actually clean out the building and then I've been helping Holly here and there and hope to going forward. And didn't, I didn't talk to Kelly or Nikki prior to doing the PowerPoint, so I will cut out a lot of mine because there's some duplication. But this is a historic photo of the building, which shows it was built way back in the day, I think around 1905 or so, before the Sioux Theater is built, there was actually a parking lot to the right. The Sioux Theater covers up, the Pillsbury's best, best sign is actually above the Sioux Theater. If you're driving south on Ashman Street, you can still, still see it, just barely. I did a very rudimentary PowerPoint as well, but I just wanted to go back in time a little bit farther to talk about how things, when I was with the Downtown Development Authority when problems really started to hit, Gary Shilts had owned the building for many years. He had run into various financial challenges and in 2015, the building was foreclosed on. And I remember meeting with Central Savings Bank, trying to figure out what to do and as, as the Downtown Development Authority really trying to figure out how to help them find an owner. And they ended up finding a fellow named John Mackey, who was very interested at the time, I believe, in, in drug rehabilitation programs and various things like that. And he gave it about a year and he moved in some tenants in the upstairs. And then he had some challenges and he had to sell and almost, it almost got foreclosed on again. And that is when, at the time, Patrick Fomia and George Japaya and Sean Japaya, they were just starting to look for different projects. They had just completed the Hampton and they ended up purchasing the building under, I would say, some arm twisting on a lot of our parts in the community. And they gave it a year or a couple of years and really worked hard trying to figure out how to pull the numbers together and get the project to happen. And they went through a lot of the same steps that the current owner is, and they just felt like there was not the financial return on investment at the time. And they ended up putting it up for sale as well. And that's when a lot of the things that Kelly and Nikki referenced with the building, pretty much going abandoned. And I actually, Commissioner Houbusta, well, I'll go to the next slide. These things started happening more and more over time from my observation. I think Commissioner Houbusta, either you found the water leak, something happened where we were randomly walking down the street in the winter and we heard like a waterfall and Commissioner Houbusta was just happened to be walking by. And we went into the building and he waded through water that was shooting him in the face, just, it was completely randomly, from the water main break, breaking and got the water turned off and I think saved the building from probably about a 20-foot flood. So it's been, it's, it's had so many problems over the years that, that's kind of where we're at now. So I just wanted to give a different picture from before the, this was from the fire which happened due to one of the tenants trying to plug in an, an amp as big as this room, plus having apparently a certain type of operating, growing operation as well. But it cooked the entire apartment, lit the building on fire. Luckily, the fire department caught it quickly and got all the tenants out. And we ended up hiring, this was at, when I was on my own a few years after the DDA, we ended up hiring, I think in 2021 or 2022, about 15 people to clean out the units, which were filled for over 50 years of people. which were filled for over fifty years of people's stuff. Over ten dumpsters of pure garbage was hauled out of all the apartments. And we also returned a lot of things to people. You can go to the next slide. And that was funded by the, by, by Fomia and Japaya and those folks to really help get the building ready for a new buyer. So they did put a lot in. And I just wanted to talk about Holly. She, I didn't talk to her about what I was going to say about it, but we kind of, actually, I didn't find her at all. One of the DDA directors in between, I think around the COVID time, Holly had gotten a hold of them. She had just moved back to the area from Houston, I believe. And she had retired and I think came up to be closer to her mother. And she, because her family was originally from Rudyard area. And I think she read, read in the newspaper some article about the community and came in and somehow said, I want to do something to help in, in the community. What do you think would be a good idea? And the DDA director at the time said, you should buy this building. And she had zero experience, from what I know, in any sort of development besides fixing up her own homes. And she took the plunge and has dedicated the last few years of her life and I think all of her, you know, financial resources to this project going forward. And so that's something that I just have found very, um, she's very passionate about making something happen and really making sure that she's a, you know, building a team and a coalition as well. And I also wanted to mention just how much, how big of a deal it was for the city of Sioux St. Marie, city manager and staff to reach out to Holly when they, when they found out this. I think it was a one-time opportunity with the Mitch, the, uh, the Land Bank, the State of Michigan Land Bank, where, where there was a specific grant. And the city actually, from what I understand, was able to receive a sixteen thousand dollar or so administration fee for administering the grant. But that really helped bring in a couple hundred thousand to keep the building from falling over after the fire. And Holly, the current owner, I believe the total cost was over three hundred thousand. She invested the remaining balance. So there's a lot of money that's already gone into it so far, just to get it from, to stabilize the flooring, the second floor from collapsing and the, the new roof. So I just wanted, this is my last slide. Without Oprah, you know, the, the, the project really hangs in the balance from my observation. Cost of construction is just outrageous. If you look at the total number of units that were referenced, I think eleven apartments and then there's three commercial storefronts. If you divide that by five point six million, you're at about a four hundred thousand dollar cost to build these units. That is not inflated due to, you know, crazy gold-plated, you know, toilets or anything like that. That is just the cost of current construction in a post-COVID environment. Nobody can do it. Nobody can fix up these historic buildings without some help from some program. And so many of, what, how I see a lot of these programs is it drives down the price of construction to where things would have normally been in like twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. It's just crazy amount of inflation for construction costs. There's limited ways to reduce costs. And I think Holly especially is very good at twisting arms and counting pennies. And I think she's done her due diligence on that. The other part is interest rates are still relatively high and, you know, you're, you're running seven, eight percent. Maybe it's not high compared to the olden days, but it's still pretty high. And then in my personal opinion, any of these projects, we run the risk. I remember ten years ago, we were sitting around saying, we're in a housing crisis because of the Lox job coming. We have to build, 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 build. Now, I personally am starting to see a, see it be where, what happens ten years from now? How do we make sure that we, you know, aren't caught with, you know, a lot of jobs leaving? Hopefully that doesn't happen. But there is, you know, shifting demand, their housing prices are, are kind of going goofy. The same thing with apartment rent rates. So having any of these programs in place for kind of keeping people feeling comfortable that they can know a little bit of what the costs are for taxes and things like that is important. So all that being said, I just would encourage everybody to look at this project differently. And I just wanted to end on one other thing. The Obsolete Property Rehab Act does not apply to every building. It only applies to obsolete buildings and the city staff spend a lot of due diligence, looking at the buildings, deciding if they're obsolete, deciding if they're not obsolete. And there's a ton of projects out there that don't qualify and people can't get these funds. These are special projects where the buildings are in major need of help. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Justin. Anybody else that would like to come up? If you could introduce yourself for the audience, please.
Absolutely. Linda Ho, the Sioux Convention and Visitors Bureau. We rented by, we rent that, we were renting that long before the fir, the fire. And it was flooding then. That's why we had to move out. We had to move out because it flooded twice. It was in such bad shape and then there was, it just couldn't get anybody else in. But I wanted, because of tourism, coming down the main street, those empty buildings. You know, I have, I think a lot of you have met Dave Lorenz along the way. He was the head of Pier Michigan. He's walked our streets. He said, these buildings have got to be taken care of. These old buildings are beautiful. They're what we need in our community. We want it to grow in this community. And we walked, and I know during two thousand and eighteen, we went and put a lot of money into just covering up those empty buildings because it's been empty for a long, long time. And you take a look at that and we'd put the old antique pictures in there and we still have them, I know, for the some that have, have reopened and come, you know, have moved forward. But to us and tourism, that main street is number one. Main Street, Ashman Street, and Portage Avenue. Those are our main streets. Those are people come into our community. They come into our downtown. And if you take a look, I mean, you can see what's happening on the other side of the Ashman Bridge. That, that building's going to be beautiful when it's done, you know? And it couldn't have been afforded without a grant also. Grants are very important. As you know, I got a two and a half million dollar grant for the I-500 track, you know, to make it better, to make this community better. I said, in twelve years, it's not a long time. It is not a long time because I'll be in this job twenty-three years at the end of the month. And I can tell you, the changes we're seeing along the way have been beautiful. If it wasn't for the grants, those buildings wouldn't be as they are today. Because I can tell you, when we were on Five Thirty-Eight Ashman Street, I can tell you, we had to go down in the basement all the way to the front just to use a bathroom. And it wasn't a nice one. So I mean, you know, those are the type of things. We deserve to have these nice old buildings in our town. They make us who we are. That history is us. And for us to take twelve years and, and know that we are not going to get it in twelve years anyway. If they don't get the money, it's not going to be there. How are we, you can't continually putting your own money in, which I think she's already put a lot of her own money in. And so it's about going after it. And I think it's really important for the tourism of the future, for the people in this community, and to be proud of the buildings as they're coming downtown. I remember being right downtown and remembering the jewelry shops downtown, all the different things that were there. They're not there anymore. I said, we need to have activity downtown. People will come downtown when there's activity. People like things to do. And we're seeing that even in what we do at the Convention and Visitors, bringing in events or working with the community to put on events. Those events bring people into town. And when they bring the Art Center down there, that, the whole art district is another whole area that we, we don't have. And we want to grow. We want to continue on. I really, really urge you to vote yes on this. That it's a very, very important part for what we do. We have taken, the Convention and Visitors is a prime example of how we've grown over the years because of the fact of the money that the people, the people coming here to visit, they love coming here. But if we don't continue, people won't continue, have new things for them to do. Because you don't come back and do the same thing over and over and over again. You just don't. You might do it once or twice, but then you want to come back and you want to see new. So this is a help, a part of the growth. And like I said, twelve years is nothing compared to the future, the future of the downtown. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else in the audience?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Josh Billington. I'm a resident and developer consultant along with property owner in the city of Sioux St. Marie. I just completed a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant for my property at eight oh three Young Street. Grants need to be looked at as a catalyst for economic development and not as a handout. I feel as though that we have very few tools and you have very few tools as a, as a city to enable folks and inspire folks to invest their own money in upgrading the city. That helps everyone. And I would appreciate the, I appreciate you guys to really consider and pass this Oprah as well as follow the policy that you all have passed in the past regarding Oprah's and how Kelly Freeman has worked so hard to put together the policy to, as a guideline. And if there's continued disagreement on that policy, that I'd encourage you to change the policy. Inconsistency in governing is not good economic policy. And that only destabilizes investors and, um, from, from putting money into our community. So I'd appreciate your, your positive vote on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anybody else? Sure. Hi.
Hi, I'm Holly Roberts, the person who bought Five Thirty-Eight. I just wanted to know if anybody has any questions of me.
Thanks, Holly. Uh, anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Of Holly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Holly. I appreciate the opportunity to ask you a question. One of the things that, that I know we've had conversations about is, is what happens to the building after you. And, and one of the things that, that I know you've talked about is, is turning it over to a five oh one C three. And so I guess my question isn't just for you, it would also be for Nikki or Kelly as, as well. If that's something that happens, does that building then come off the tax rolls? I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Absolutely. Well, although I think I'm going to live for another thirty or forty years.
I hope so.
Yeah, me too. Anyway, I had thought about giving the building to the Sioux Area Art Center. And one of the things that we discussed, Agassad, I plus the Board of Directors, was the fact that I wasn't and am not willing to give it to an entity that won't pay city taxes. And so I even went and saw an attorney and to explore the idea that a nonprofit can own a for-profit entity. So that like, being the building owner, the landlord, whatever all is entailed, would be a separate business that would be owned by the Art Center. So they wouldn't be eligible for any kind of tax, uh, tax, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be tax exempt. But the thing is, and here's to me what's really comical, after we went through all these discussions, the Board of Directors of the Art Center decided that, no, we don't know anything about business. We don't want to be in business. We just want to focus on art. You go be the, so probably what will happen is, it'll be, it'll go to an entrepreneur who cares about seeing it go off into the future. I mean, that's, that's what really, that's why I got involved in this whole thing. It's, it's not, I'm not, I already have enough money to live, okay? And one of my primary projects is to spend that money before I die. In all candor, because I don't have any kids, ready family. So that aside, uh, I want it to go on. And I talked to Art Center and they agreed that maybe they'll have some kind of scholarship, um, naming in my mom's name. So, but you never know about the future, but that's, that's where I am right now.
Thank you. That certainly answered my question. I appreciate that.
Okay, no worries. Anybody else?
Mr. Rubinstein?
Um, not so much as a question. I, I guess I did have a question at one point as, uh, to, could the financials work on the project if it was ten years versus twelve years? Um, and I don't think we got this in time for it to be on the agenda, but we, we did get a letter from Forefront pretty much stating that the full twelve years was, was needed. So I, I, I just wanted to make that comment to the, to the public because I don't think it made it into the agenda and the packet in time. But initially I had that question until we got that letter from, from Forefront.
Oh, you know what? I didn't even know about it. They didn't call it us, me. They just told me, if you want construction financing, you've got to get that Oprah. Okay?
And so, yeah, thank you for everything you're doing.
Oh, no. Well, it's going to depend on you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Holly.
Please, please, please give me the Oprah, please. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, we will, we will now close the public hearing and go to Commissioner Comments. I have a couple of comments, but most of them have been covered and Holly did a great, passionate plea, so I certainly couldn't top that. But we've been working for many years to become a redevelopment-ready community through MEDC. And we want to create the environment and the infrastructure here to attract redevelopment projects. The Oprah program is one of those programs in that toolbox and it does provide a financial incentive for redevelopment of properties. We are a qualified community and to be that, you had to meet a couple of different criteria, one of which being our median income has to be lower than others. And, and so as mentioned, we did adopt a tax abatement policy and on November fourth, twenty twenty-four, as a framework and guideline so that we could use that with internal staff and also with investors so that they would know what offerings we have, what we would consider for redevelopment. And Oprah is listed as one of those programs that are available in, in that network. There are some benefits to tax abatements. We've talked about those a lot. They do help to attract business and development. They help to revitalize a community and a district. And they do increase demand and could potentially increase property values of other properties. And they do incentivize investment in infrastructure in your community. There's a long-term gain in the expanded tax base of the community. Nikki mentioned that Oprah legislation expires twelve thirty-one twenty-six, so under the existing law, there will be no more exemptions approved. Over the last five years, there have been two hundred and four projects in Michigan at a hundred and two different cities. And they range from a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty million dollars. There are hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects that have been sought after and approved by these communities. And I'm not talking about Detroit's one of them, Grand Rapids is one of them, but City Elma, City of Flint, City of Sheboygan, City of Albion. A lot of our peer cities participate in the Oprah program, um, including a bunch in the UP. This project, as has been said, without the Oprah, probably will lose MEDC funding. That RAP grant for over two million dollars requires city contribution. And this is the city contribution. So without this, the RAP grant, I'm assuming will not be possible at all. Holly has put in six hundred and nine thousand dollars with equity, which is amazing. And we appreciate your commitment to City Sioux St. Marie. And this project is fantastic. Five point six million dollar investment in downtown. So it's going to put a contractor to work, um, ten construction jobs. It'll be taxed at the full value at the end of twelve years. So we have to look at it as a long-term investment for the city corp, uh, city of Sioux St. Marie. Holly is an individual investor. She has an LLC. She's not a conglomerate. This is not a large corporation. This is not a dark store thing. This is Holly developing a building downtown. She's going to have eleven market rate apartments. And I know we had, one of the slides in here was about the tax loss. You don't have a loss if you never had the tax. So we are going to collect taxes based on what the building is valued at today. And in twelve years, it's going to pop up in value and we'll collect the higher property tax. There's no loss if we don't approve this. It doesn't increase in value. One of the next items on the agenda, we're looking at flexing our zoning because we know that we need to increase housing in Sioux St. Marie. And we've talked about- And we've talked about that at great length. So I guess I would just ask, is this a community that you want to invest in? And I think Josh said it right. We created the policy. We need to be consistent with the policy, and we want to be a community that attracts investment. So that'll go to any other commissioners that wants to make any comments. Commissioner Marble?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you all know, the city already has many tax-exempt properties. I'm all for giving businesses and business developers incentive, you know, of some sort, such as an Oprah. But I'm just not on board with the full 12-year abatement of taxes. And that's where I stand on that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Bospis-Rath?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna give kudos to everybody that spoke up and came in to support the Oprah. I know it's not always easy coming in front and talking, so thank you for doing that and showing your support. I think Linda hit it on the, hit the hammer on the nail when you said it's about tourism and bringing locals and tourists to our downtown. And if we have a bunch of empty buildings, that's not very eye-catching. And I think investing in our downtown is what we always need to do. So I will support the Oprah, and I will say that 100%. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Rubenstein?
I think the biggest piece for me on this is, is the math just doesn't lie. So roughly 22 years from today, if this passes, the city is gonna start being in a better position than we are now. So 30 years from now, we're in a better spot by approving this than if we don't approve it. Commissioner Marble, I understand you don't like the 12 years, but we passed the policy. The, the bank is essentially requiring the 12 years, and we're gonna be better off in the long term. So it just, I, I get it might make you feel uncomfortable, but it, it's insane to me for us to not pass this. And I forget who mentioned it tonight too, but the value of all the buildings around it. So we own a building downtown, so the fact that somebody is putting $5 million into a building, two buildings over from us, it's gonna help everyone around us. So I understand your concern and your frustration, but long-term, this is a no-brainer for us.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Bauer?
There's no doubt in my mind that this is going to pass tonight, so I'm gonna be brief with my comments. But I will say that, you know, you do talk about consistency. I personally voted against the last Oprah and can therefore not justify, you know, voting for this one, even though it is a project that I think is a good project, and I wish you all the best of luck. I have supported the Sioux Area Arts Council in a big, big way, hosted monthly events for the Alberta House and its artists from the time I opened 1668 Winery to the time that we couldn't do it anymore due to COVID and those restrictions. So I mean, it's not that, and I'm certainly not against development. I've got a lot of skin in the game downtown. I put my money where my mouth is. I've met Mrs., Ms. Roberts, and she's a very fine person. And again, I wish you all the best of luck. However, when I do have people coming to me and they're saying, I want my, you know, I want my streets plowed faster, my road ha, is full of holes, my mother is buried in the cemetery and she's under a foot of water because the drainage needs to be improved. And, and people have come to me with these exact problems within the past six months, right? I can't justify taking any more money away from the, the city coffers. And you say that, you know, that it isn't money that, that is there, or that, you know, that we're not gonna lose this money because we don't, because it hasn't been, you know, grown yet, or the way, the way that you put it. But I disagree with that because that's something that you can extrapolate, you know? And you know that, I mean, if not, then why are we even exercising this? Because she's, you know, because she's gonna get that money, right? That's it as far as my comments. I don't want anyone to, you know, to think I'm negative or against development. I'm not. Clearly, I'm not. My actions have shown that I'm not. But in this case, just for the, if anything else, for the sake of my own consistency, I'm not going to support more tax breaks and to take money away from the city that we can use for the things that the citizens come to me about on practically a daily basis, you know, that we need money for.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Any comments? Commissioner Talantino?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. I kinda, I go the same way with, with Ray on this one. I have to be consistent. Everybody knows which way I'm gonna go on this vote. Now, the problem that I have and is, I'm definitely not negative business. We need business, it has to happen. Right now, we're at 46 or 48% non-taxable properties with inside a three-mile, I believe? 46, 48?
Somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many current pilots, Oprahs, and brownfields do we have going at this point? I wish Brian was here, Rob, and I don't mean to put you on the spot here on this, and I'm sorry.
We have nine.
Okay, we have nine. When's the first one gonna fall off? You know, Mayor, off the top of your head?
I don't.
Okay. You know, I mean, and our non-taxable properties inside the city limits keeps growing, growing and growing. And to kind of mirror what Commissioner Bauer said about our streets and different things that we've gotta do, if that keeps growing, you know, there has to, something has to stop. Maybe we should take a look at this policy and change this policy up. Because yes, this one expires in 2026, but guess what? Another one will probably come around, okay? So maybe we, we as a commission need to take a look at this, you know? And as we get constituents talking to me, talking to you about our roads, which we know that's one of their biggest concerns right now, and, and I get it, I fully understand. But those roads comes from tax dollars. And at a million dollars a mile right now per road, we got a lot of millions we gotta make up for, okay? So that's just my two cents on it, and thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Rubenstein?
I guess just in response to Commissioners Bauer, Talantino, and Marble, how many things has this governing body over the last 50 to 100 years prior to us said no to, that we're dealing with financial issues now because of those decisions? Our decisions up here have consequences, so by saying no to this now, despite knowing we're gonna have more money in the long term, affects generations down the road. So just think about that as, as you're going to vote. We know, we, it might not be 22 years, it could fluctuate a little bit with inflation on the value of buildings, so maybe it's 25 or even 30 years. Longer term, we are in a better position as a city if we vote a yes on this. Clear as day. So just think about that before going to vote.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Habusta?
Well, I appreciate all the comments from around the dais, from around the, from the audience as well. Mr. Nepper, thank you for making me look like a hero. I appreciate that. I don't know if that's quite how the story went, but I'll take the win. Certainly, it's good information, and, and certainly, it's not just information that I'm hearing from around here. I, I've heard from, on both sides, from outside of this room as well, issues with or for an Oprah and if, issues against an Oprah. And, and I think that there is, there's much to be learned, and, and there's much we need to continue to work on as a community. I would remark that the first thing we need to work on is a goal and vision setting. Everything we do should flow out of that. That should happen every two years when we're elected. I've been asking for it for the past two and a half years, and yet we still do not have it. Everything should flow out of that, and this would make decisions like this far easier because we would have a, a vision for our community, and, and I, I think that's truly important. I, I will say this today, I, I do appreciate the concerns I've heard from people here, but I will say that today I will support this Oprah. I want to be clear that this is not a, a tax loss, as the mayor has said. And I understand we quantify different ways, but I do not see this as a tax loss. I've met with several developers throughout the state of Michigan over the past several months, and one of the things that they have mentioned over and over again is they are looking for communities with tools that they can use to develop within the community. This is a tool. It's part of our toolbox, as has been mentioned, and so I fully plan on supporting that today. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. And that was a good point. Commissioner Habusta and I had an opportunity to meet with a developer down, when we were at a session a few weeks ago, and they're the largest housing developer in the state of Michigan, and they're starting to work in Houghton, and they wanted to come over here and have a conversation too. But this is one of the things that they were asking about is, is what, what tools we do have in our toolbox, so it was a good point. I just wanted to clarify too, on the non-tax properties, it is, I think, less than 50%, but it's because they're all governmental. We have a very high proportion of government-owned properties in the city of Sioux-St. Marie, whether it's federal, state, tribal, city, LSSU. Majority of the properties that are non-tax, there are over 700 of them that are non-tax, and they were, I think there were between nine and 11 pilots is all. Very, very small percentage, yeah. So the primary problem is, is they're governmental or nonprofit or churches. Not that that's a problem, but that's why they're non-tax. So, all right, any other discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the res?
Yeah, just a couple more.
Yeah.
Number one is, I don't think the why is really as relevant as the fact that they are. Secondly is that I do want to say that I fully agree with Commissioner Habusta, that we do need a goal-setting session, and we have been talking about this for quite a while. We still don't have one. And, you know, if we did have a goal-setting session, then maybe our vision as a board would be more cohesive. Maybe.
Agree.
Not, not necessarily true, but could be. And that's that.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Support.
So do we do have a motion in support? Any other questions or comments? And we'll do a roll call vote on this, please. Oops, sorry.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
No.
Commissioner Bospis-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Habusta?
Yes.
Commissioner Marble?
No.
Commissioner Rubenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
No.
Motion passes on a 4-3 vote. Thank you very much, Holly. Uh, moving on into item E, Special Orders of Business, number two. Deputy City Manager Troyer.
Thank you, Mayor. The second item under Special Orders of Business is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the city's zoning ordinance to permit residential accessory dwelling units, modify distance separations between residential accessory buildings and main buildings, and increase accessory building area in the RSV district. And Community Development Director Kelly Freeman is going to present.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Commissioners. Glad to be back. Maybe. So this ordinance before the city commission tonight, as Deputy City Manager Troyer mentioned, would enable a couple of things. The first is, single-family homeowners to construct accessory dwelling units in addition to their single-family homes. What you see on the screen is the proposed definition for an accessory dwelling unit. Importantly, they are structures which must comply with the Michigan Residential Code. So that would exclude mobile homes and travel trailers from being used for those purposes. It could be a stick-built structure on-site, which is the most likely scenario, or like a small double-wide or modular building brought in that meets the requirements of the code. It can be in a detached structure, it can be in an addition, or it can be in a basement or attic or inside of an existing building without expanding or modifying the structure at all. And for the purposes of the definition, it just has to be a smaller square footage than the single-family home to which it's accessory. In this grouping, you just see the different residential zoning districts where the ADUs would be permitted by right. Here is the draft, changes to the schedule regulations. So what's proposed here is, in cases where you have a structurally attached accessory dwelling unit at ground level, you get a reduced rear setback. Normally, it's 35. This would let you go down to 25, which is the same rear setback if you have an attached garage to your house that's, that's in effect today. Additionally, if it is, let's see, if it's in an attic, you are allowed three stories of 35 feet. Right now, for a single-family dwelling on its own, it's two stories or 30. And where it is a, an attached or detached structure to an existing building, the lot coverage max increases from 35% to 45%. Just to give you a little bit of a bump if you have kind of a tighter, tighter situation on your property. So 1703 that you see here is the generic set of regulations that handle accessory buildings generally. So the title, this is changed to accessory buildings not containing an accessory dwelling unit. So this would be sheds, garages, the typical structures that you would associate with a single-family residence. One of the changes here you see in number three is in the RSV zoning district, which is kind of the outlying area of the city where you have larger lots. Typically, the size of an accessory building is, cannot exceed the, the ground floor area of a house. We had a situation out on 14th North Meyer a few years ago where a couple built a 28 by 28 footprint house. It was a two-story. So the 28 by 28 building was the largest structure that they could have as a detached building. So they ended up going to the zoning board of appeals and getting a variance to build a bigger one because they had a log splitter. And, you know, when you've got 10 acres, you can't just have a push mower and a small snow blower, that takes larger equipment. So that was something that has been in the back of my mind since then. So that gets incorporated here along with the ADUs. We're also changing the accessory building spacing between that and the house. So right now, it's 10 feet wall-to-wall. This changes it five feet eaves-to-eaves, so they give people a bit more flexibility in placing those. Everything in black here you see is the exact same, no changes. 1703.1, this is all new language. So this would be for a detached accessory building. So like if you wanted to put up a garage in the back with an apartment above it, or even an accessory dwelling unit on its own. These would be the regulations that would apply. It's gotta be in the rear yard, it can't have a greater floor area than the house. 10-foot separation, eaves-to-eaves, but could be reduced to five if the requirements of the Michigan Residential Code are met. Additional height is granted. Typically, the height maxes 15 feet. This would let you go up to 25 to allow that second-story apartment over the top of a garage. And then some of the, it's new here, but it's basically copied out of the previous section. Design has to complement each other, the main building, and then you need to have a dedicated parking space for the unit. And then 1703.2, this is for units that are attached. Basically, you gotta meet the same setbacks as the main building, complementary design, and the parking space. Last month, the planning commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend to the city commission that this language be adopted. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly on this? Commissioner Rubenstein?
Uh, sort of unrelated, and it's okay if you don't have the answer right now. A while back, I had asked a question related to ceiling heights within rental units?
Yes.
And I, it triggered me to remember to ask about it when you brought up. I think it says in there 15 to 25 feet, but does that play into this at all, or we're-
No, but we're working on that separately.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Marble?
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Any other questions before we go on?
I just want to make a comment because I hardly ever compliment Kelly, but I think you did a really great job on this one.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Hopefully, you know, we-
It's going to solve a lot of problems.
Yeah, we really haven't seen the private developer come to the community in the way that we hoped we had to address our housing problems. So this will open the door for Joe, homeowner who wants to make an investment for themselves, for an elderly parent who wants to move in, a wayward child they want to keep close, but not too close. All kinds of different scenarios. Something like this would be a fantastic addition to somebody's property.
Great.
Commissioner Talentino has a comment.
Kelly, I just want to say thank you, great job on this. I mean, I said my two cents when you brought the first one to us. I just think this is a great idea. This is actually going to create tax dollars because if somebody builds another structure, their taxes are going up, you know? And I think that's a way that we, as a city, taking this ordinance, putting it in place, we can do it that way. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Marble, finally.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the included ordinance to permit single-family dwellings to have accessory dwelling units to modify distant separations between residential accessory buildings and main buildings, and to increase accessory building area in the RSV district.
Support.
Motion in support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thanks again, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on into item F, Communications. Deputy City Manager Troyer.
This is from Richard Delamonte of University of Recycling. He wanted to address the commission with a brief presentation tonight.
It's up to you if you want to. Visual aids are great. Camera's coming this way, so if you want to point it that way, that's the best. And if you want to grab, do you have, are we doing the slide thing, or? Is it just for us? Okay. Did you want to use your PowerPoint, Richie, or just talk?
If you guys want to pull it up, I don't have anything to, unless you have it ready to go. So everybody can walk through.
Oh, yeah, we had to press to change.
You could bring up the PowerPoint if you guys actually have that.
Okay.
I think I sent it to you.
Yeah, we have it here in our packets. Adjusted on the fly. And she'll pull it up. If you want to introduce yourself, that'd be great.
I can introduce myself. My name is Richard Delamonte. I was born here in Sioux-St. Marie, went to Sioux High, graduated '87, went to Lake State, played some golf there, and then I transferred down to Michigan State where I got an engineering degree. I've been working in automotive now for about 30 years. In 2005, I invested in Sioux-St. Marie at the old Pike Building on 628 West Spruce Street, where we have been doing deposit recycling. And what that means is I originally worked with Marquetti to recycle all their beer cans, beer bottles for many years, and then working with Newberry Bottling and also Coca-Cola. I've been doing their recycling of their deposit material for the past 20 years, paying city taxes here locally on the island. So I'm here today to announce that I am expanding a program that I started many, many years ago, but I've been so busy with my other life that I haven't been able to really bring this to life. And now I have been certified to purchase material from the public out of my site here locally on the island at 628 West Spruce Street. So if persons have materials that fit, the items that we're actually collecting, persons won't have to go to A&amp;L in Kinross or out in Dafter to read. They'll be able to actually come to the island of Sioux-St. Marie to get their monies. And one of the things that I had been working on for many years is this little kit that you see here with some of the items that all of us interact with ultimately every day. And what this kit does is ultimately, a lot of us don't have deposit on our water bottles, so we have a box of silo here that we, basically ultimately, when you become a, what we're looking for is students at the University of Recycling. And what we do at the University of Recycling is we're going to, when they become a student, not everybody can become a student, but ultimately, if you have a, somewhere to put this box system, like if somebody that lives in an apartment, not necessarily can put a box system to recycle this type of stuff because ultimately, it is garbage or stuff that ends up attracting fruit flies. But what we have here is I have this box kit we've created for people that do recycle every day into the mixed bins or pay for their bag tags here locally in the Sioux to recycle this type of material. So what I have is I have some of these kits here available. Basically, this kit here has PET water bottles, aluminum cans, high-density polyethylene detergent bottles. There's colored and natural. The natural is milk jugs. So really, these are four of the items that this kit recycles and fits in your garage. It isn't for outdoor use, but we do have bags that come with the system. When somebody becomes a student, they get bags, and if they do, as we teach them, and fill the kit up the way we've taught them how to fill it up, they bring it back to us at our site here in the Sioux. We'll give them money for that material, depending on what the money and value of the material is that we're able to offer. At a minimum, if they fill up one of the bins, the way we taught them, they'll get a free bag. So basically, when they become a student, they get a set of bags that ultimately lasts them probably a couple of years. Once they run out of bags and they fill them up like we teach them, we're going to give them free bags. So every time you bring in a right bag, we'll give you another bag. Ultimately, you never have to pay another bag for another bag to capture this type of material. It's only four materials. We also bring in lots of different materials that we can recycle. I don't have this in my PowerPoint. I did give this commission, all of you, a copy of this. I'll hand this out to the public. As far as a partnership I just established with a company downstate called Scrap Dog. And what Scrap Dog does is they basically recycle anything you ever touch. You'll see some of the items there, but ultimately, I'm going to bring that service here to the Sioux-St. Marie. Not looking for any funding here today. It's really more of an announcement that this service is here, in town, locally on the island, and we're looking to pay taxes and help people bring, ultimately, get money for this material that we're generating. This isn't all the most valuable stuff. Of course, we have deposit in Michigan. So ultimately, the aluminum box, for instance, a lot of people get a lot of aluminum cans. This box is offered to those who have boxes and bags of cans all over their garage house. Ultimately, they can fill that, that bag of aluminum is the 240 cans. Ultimately, the box kit has been built based on every party store that has recycling in the back for deposit. So we took that box because the bag is a standard bag. And when I buy bulk bags, ultimately, you get a very good value versus what you pay at Myers or Walmart for your garbage bags. Plus, we're eliminating the bag tag fee that people of the Sioux are paying right now to recycle. So ultimately, I'm here to offer this opportunity for the residents to become students. Because I can't open up to the public right away, I'd have a lineup possibly down the road because a lot of them downstate have lines up down the road. We'll only be opened in the beginning to students. And I'm here to offer 50 scholarships for the residents of Sioux-St. Marie. Basically, these kits, to become a student, there's a $100 application fee. I'm going to donate 50 qualifying students of the Sioux-St. Marie. I'm also going to do a similar program, similar donation to Across the River, and I'll have a recycling competition between the two Sues. We'll have six months, and at the end of six months, we'll, once I get everything rolling here, we'll do more advertisement here with the local radio stations and ultimately through your team. But ultimately, that's why I'm here, is to let the public know that this service is going to be here. I'm going to donate 50 of these kits to 50 qualifying students that have, ideally, kids that have, like to drink milk, because that's a very valuable material right now that's out there, is milk jugs. And right now, I think a lot of that stuff goes in the landfill, as most of this stuff does. So hopefully, through all the things that we can recycle, some of the other items that we're recycling, you'll see on the little thing I sent out, basically, everything that you can touch, we can pretty much turn to either dollars or some type of savings where you don't have to pay to get rid of it. Other items are electric cords, anything with a cord, we'll be able to recycle. Some things have more value than the other. There'll be more advertising that comes out. I'm going to look at what the bus value is for advertisement. I know the Sioux evening news, don't know if it's as local as it used to be, but we'll do our best to support everybody that's in the advertisement business to bring this program to everybody here. This kit also, one of the main things that I, that we're, our mission is, is that every recycling company can have this kit. So the Chippewa County Center, they can offer this kit to their recyclers that come there. Ultimately, there is a fee for the kit itself, but if people want a little bit easier way to bring their material into, even to the Chippewa County Recycling Center, I'm not against that as I'm working with companies like that around the state of Michigan and throughout the country. So with all that being said, that's why I'm here.
Thanks, Richie. What student is university or high school?
University of Recycling student, so that's what-
What age level?
Any age.
Any age, okay.
Ultimately, our goal is to set up accounts with the local bank so that all the recycling dollars can get sent to them directly. It's not a lot of money that comes from it, but ultimately, they could put it into a student fund for their child, instead of paying the money for get rid of your garbage. I'm trying to offer a program to help incentivize parents to teach their kids, and ultimately, we're going to teach them a lot of things about cell phone recycling, laptop recycling, you name it, electronics. We're going to teach them how to tear things apart, find chips that are valuable. Everybody hears about gold and electronics. We're going to show you where the gold is and how people go about doing that. We won't necessarily be authorized to do that because you've got to have a certain level to start doing it here in the Sioux, but depending on how the, depending on how the reception is and how well we do, and ultimately, Sioux, Ontario is a very unique customer. They don't have deposit over there. All of their cans are going to scrap yards today. The value that I'm able to get over the 20 years I've been doing this, I've been, I'm at the mill direct. So I don't have middlemen between me and mills. So I'm going to try to give that benefit to the students here in Sioux, Michigan, Sioux, Ontario. Of course, Sioux, Ontario not being deposit, they're going to generate, they generate a lot more aluminum cans that are going back to the stores. So they could have a possible benefit on this, on the challenge because they're going to recycle more aluminum. But if our students are at least using the kit to go back to wherever it is to use that bag as a tool to get their deposit at Myers, yes, they'll have to fill it in, but I've been working on that program where I could pay deposit back. It's a little tricky situation with the bottle law. You can only pay out deposit, you can only pay as much as you sell. So ultimately, distributors are selling a lot of deposits to the stores, and then that's why they have to bring it back. How I started was distributors didn't want to bring that, this side of their business into their nice buildings where they have the new stuff because there's a lot of fruit flies and hornets that come with the recycling. We have pigeons down at our location that eat all that stuff up, so we don't have many of those. Some seagulls, but mostly pigeons. We have a, we have quite a family of pigeons. Other than that, that's really why I'm here.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for bringing that to us.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for giving me the time. Next time I come back, I'm going to share with you how we're going to double the tourists, tourism here in Sioux-St. Marie.
Yeah, Linda's gone, you've got to wait for her to come back.
Two weeks from now, yes. Two weeks from now, ultimately, we'll be back. I'll share that proposal.
All right. Thank you, Richie. All right. Item F, Communications, number two. Deputy City Manager Troyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Presentation by Riley Waterman for a free fishing library at Rotary Island Kids Fishing Pond. Is Riley here tonight? All right, so we'll bring this back to the commission at a later date. With the mayor's permission, I can move right into item G, Business Items. The first item for the commission's consideration is consideration of a bid award for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, Water Main and Lead Service Line Replacement and Water Intake Replacement. City Engineer Boyle and Water Director Tuz is going to present on this item.
Is your presentation in Word doc?
No. No, we sent it.
We sent it to get loaded up.
I sent it, but I didn't, um, put on the, uh, put in that one. Does it power on?
She should edit it to the laptop.
It's not on, man.
It should've been, uh, one eighty-nine earlier today.
The one we gave me earlier?
Yeah. From a female that-
City Commission, this? This one? And this one. And this one.
I had it, I put it on.
Can we wing it?
Sure.
There we go.
No, we're going to wing it.
Are you sure?
Yeah. So we're here to talk about the DWSRF projects. We had this all queued up for the last commission meeting, but as usual, we had a little bit of, the bidding came in, actually, the bidding came in good, but we had so many projects that we had to decide which ones we wanted to do. So we had to take a little time and talk to the contractors. You know, we had prioritized them. One is that water intake, for sure, because that one is already broken. We already bought the pipe for it, so we had to do that one. And then we had a number of just water main projects, and the lead one is Riverside Road because we've been trying to find money for that for five years, ever since I've come here because it's just like the worst water main in town here. So, and then we had a number of other ones in there, too. Then we had some lining projects under all the bridges in town. And that was one that we figured if we got into this, this point, that we would, we could probably dump out of this program for right now. But during this time, now we have two of them, the two Portage Avenue bridges are leaking, so. But, but we're going to have to take out the lining project, so. So we ended up getting three bids for the main, water main projects, which is, which was really good. In the past, we were only getting one. That one is, went with Elmer's. We had to do a little bit of negotiating with Elmer's because the lead line project was in there, and they kind of, we don't know if they, they were a little bit over budget, but we got it back in line on that one. The second one was the lining project, and that was Michael's, Michael's Corporation from down in Wisconsin. They were a little bit over the budget that we had for that. And then the last one was the intake project. We got two bids on that one, and Rowan Salvage was a little bidder on that one. So, and you guys know Rowan Salvage, they're the ones that just got done doing our dock. So-
Dave, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. For the commissioners, the last tab says DWSRF presentation. So you can kind of flip around and look at the pictures, even though they're not up on the board.
Yeah.
So, sorry about that, Dave. Thanks.
Okay. I got sidetracked. All right, so anyways, we went, we went through all the, we went through all the numbers. We get back within the- all the numbers. We get back within the DWSRF money that we have and we've set up the project now similar to what we've done with the last two CWSRF projects. So I guess we're at the point now we'd like to get these tentatively approved. So then we can move into the next item that we have to do to give that to Eagle. So then they can start moving to give us the money by the end of August, so.
So I think, so the good news is on Riverside Drive, that project would be when? Next, next year?
Yeah, probably for the most part it'll be next year.
Next year.
Yep. The, the intake pipe project will probably go this fall.
Any questions for City Engineer, Mr. Rubenstein?
Just a comment. This is a massive, massive undertaking. So we appreciate all the work that you all are putting into this.
Commissioner Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on the financing and, and the fiscal impact of it all. Under the, the fiscal impact in the agenda document, it lists that this would require an additional funding of $456,000 essentially, which could be provided to the project from the loan if the city is approved, is, or with local funds. So we need to raise an additional $450,000 to make this happen.
No, that, it's, right now, the way it's set up, it would come out of the sewer, the sewer, I mean, the water fund. And, and what that is, is to cover contingency money-
Okay.
That we, that we need. So, you know, hopefully, we won't, you know, don't wanna say that we're gonna use it, but the, the whole plan is that we try not to use that money. We, but we put that in there to keep the, the budgets correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for either Kirk or Dave? All right, there are three separate motions on this recommended action. Who'd like to do three separate long motions? Commissioner Bosworth.
Thank you Mayor. Motion to tentatively award a construction contract in the amount of $12,018,463.24 to Elmer's Crane and Dozer Incorporated by resolution and approve City Manager to sign.
Support.
Motion in support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Bosworth.
Motion to tentatively award a construction contract in the amount of 1.6 million to Rowan Salvage Company and approve City Manager to sign.
Support.
Motion in support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimously approved. Commissioner Bosworth.
Lastly, motion to approve OHM Advisors Task Order Number Three for reduction to the contract of $191,630 for construction engineering services and approve City Manager to sign.
Support.
Motion in support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Under G, Business Items, number two. Deputy City Manager Troyer.
Thank you Mayor. For the commission's consideration is, consideration of staff-proposed amendments to the city's 425 policy. I think the commission is aware of the 425 policy. It was adopted initially back in 2025. It was then suspended by the commission, then it was re-adopted by the commission. And this will be the fourth amendment to the policy if the recommended staff amendments are approved. It's being driven by some request from Sioux Township residential property as well as a potential 501(c)(3). The intent of the 425 policy was driven to keep development within the parameters of the city and not promote development out in, in the township or outside of the city, building tax base in our local community. So the, the provisions, Community Development Director did a great job pulling the recommended amendments to the policy. There would be exemptions to the 425. Exemptions would be a one-family residential dwelling with failed wells as determined in writing by a state licensed dwell, dweller. And then constructions constructed by a nonprofit organization that would have water service as well as sprinkler and fire protection services. The Water Department would be verifying and ensuring that requests meet policy guidelines. And therefore, any request that falls within the parameters of the guidelines would be approved administratively and would not come back to the commission independently. So the adoption of the policy is up for the commission's consideration.
Thank you Deputy City Manager. And appreciate the common sense comments from Kelly Freeman in there. I, I think that I agree with the changes to the policy. This will allow people that have an issue to be able to get that corrected. And it wouldn't promote development outside of the city limits. So, any questions from City Commission? Mr. Talentino?
Just out of curiosity sake, do they pay more for all the ones that are on the other side of Three Mile?
I think it's double the rate, correct? Yeah. If they're outside the city limits, then they pay double the city rate.
Double, okay. Thank you.
Any other, need somebody to make a motion on this one, please?
Motion to approve the amended 425 policy as presented.
Support.
Motion in support. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. So we'll move on to G, Business Items, number three. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. The, the next item for consideration is consideration of a short-term contract extension with Great Circle Aviation Services LLC. The commission may be aware that Great Circle Aviation has been a longtime provider of FBO services up at the airport. Back in April, the Airport Advisory Board recommended a three-month contract extension while the interim EDC Director flushed out the concept of possibly bringing airport operations in-house. Because of the dollar threshold exceeding administrative authority, the extension needs to be approved by the City Commission. It would be $33,750. It would be a short-term contract extension for a three-month period set to expire September 30th, 2025. So with that, the motion would be to authorize the City Manager to execute a short-term contract extension with Great Circle Aviation Services LLC as presented. And we'd just like to recognize and appreciate Great Circle as this was a delay in getting in front of the commission. So we appreciate their patience as we work to get this contract extension approved and payment issued on their behalf.
Thank you Deputy City Manager. And David Wade is here from Great Circle Aviation Services. Thanks for sitting through a very long beginning of the meeting. So, does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Habusta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions regarding this action item. The first is this, you know, the, this, the, the Airport Board met on April 17th, I believe, what was the, the date of the meeting. At that point, they unanimously voted to move forward with this contract extension. And the city administration was notified. However, here we are, seven days into what will be this new contract and we did not have a contract put in place beforehand. Why was there such a holdup in getting this moved forward?
It was a error on the City Manager's part. He didn't think that the item had to come in front of the commission. But it obviously did because it exceeded the $10,000 threshold.
And I guess that would, would, wouldn't satisfy my, my last question. Last meeting, I was assured that the FBO would be paid on time. We've all gotten emails that it wasn't, as you just mentioned, was that as a result of the same issue?
Correct. Without a contract in place, then the clerk couldn't issue the check.
So the contract did not roll over as we were told?
It rolled over month to month, but I believe the amount exceeded the City Manager's authority. So it had to come to the commission. And that's where the error in calculation was. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, so I, I would just say the prior City Commission action two years ago was to authorize a contract with Great Circle Aviation for a two-year period to expire on June 30. The contract exceeds, or the extension exceeds, the administrative authority of 10,000. And therefore, it required City Commission action to extend the contract. I don't hold the authority to extend a contract for a three-month period in excess of 10,000 without the City Commission's approval. So that was the delay in getting, you know, the time period from April when the Airport Advisory Board took action on it. By all means, should've come before the commission, long before now, and authorize that contract extension.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I, I think we need, we had a gracious partner in this case who, who was still willing to work with us. And, but that is not always the case. It is very important that we complete these contracts and get them done in time. So we're not approving a contract seven days into it. I, I think that needs to be on the forefront of our minds going forward. And we need to make sure that gets done regardless if it's an airport or anything else within our jurisdiction. We need to make sure those contracts are done in time. Thank you.
Good comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Rubenstein?
I just wanna say I agree with Commissioner Abusta. And, and this isn't the only case where we've had, I'll call it, lack of communication and issues come up. And I think, you know, mistakes happen or interpretations are different sometimes, but I think over-communication to us as a commission, so we don't get emails or people reaching out to us who are frustrated. I think just getting out in front of it and letting us know what's going on is gonna make things a lot smoother across the board. Even when mistakes are made or things happen that shouldn't be, I think just over-communication is gonna help a lot of situations be alleviated.
Good comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Talentino?
A lot of people don't get a chance to see these numbers that we get to see about how many people actually utilize this airport. These would be some great numbers to get out there to the public if there's any way we can get them to them. For years, all we've ever heard is, you know, it was just the local people that used the airport. That's not even close to being true. Quickly, 2024, last year, there was, there was over 1,023 flights. You know, let's just look at February of this year, just, I'm just gonna, or February of '23, excuse me. Two private, 16 corporate, zero military. But you look down this, you see a lot of military. You see the medevac numbers are huge as well. So I think these are some good numbers that if there's any way we can get this out to the people, just to let them see that. This is, this is good information to share.
Good comments. Who'd like to make a motion? Commissioner Habusta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a short-term contract extension with Great Circle Aviation Services LLC as presented.
Support.
Motion in support. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. So we'll move on into G, Business Items, number four. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. Next item is consideration to award bids for chemical purchases at the water treatment facility. We went out to bid for this item. We received three separate companies provide at bids. Recommendation would be three separate motions. Motion to award the aluminum sulfate to Alexander Chemical. Motion to award chlorine and hydrated lime to Haveland. And motion to award acid to PennCo.
Good skip. Any, there was even a little pronunciation thing in there. Hydrofluosilic. All right. Any questions or comments? Who'd like to make a motion? Commissioner?
Motion to award the purchase of aluminum sulfate to Alexander Chemical for the price of $588 per dry ton.
Support.
Motion in support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Rubenstein?
Motion to award chlorine and hydrated lime to Havland Chemical for the price of $1.95 per pound and 49 cents per pound respectively.
Support.
Uh, motion in support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Technically, that's forty-nine.
Forty-nine-nine, yeah. Point four-nine-nine.
Next.
Commissioner Rubenstein?
Motion to award hydrofluosilic acid to PennCo for, Inc. for the price of $3.06 per gallon.
Support.
Motion in support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's all passed unanimously. Thank you. Business Items, number five. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you Mayor. Consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding for DISC Gulf in Sioux Coalition, Sioux area recreation area. DISC Gulf Course Adopt a Park Plan. This item came before the commission, a couple meetings back. So this is just coming back to the commission to finalize the MOU or authorize the City Manager to finalize and execute the MOU. There's also a request. The group had gotten quotes for concrete work. And so administration is requesting to waive the competitive bid process, utilize the quotes that DISC has received for the concrete tee box work, and award the work to Darling Concrete LLC in the amount of $13,500.
Thank you Deputy City Manager. Any questions, comments for her? Commissioner Habusta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned, at the last time we waived the competitive bidding process, I am struggling to continue to waive this process, which was put intentionally in, in motion in, in our charter. And are, are there not, you know, this is clearly not a single source vendor because we have two quotes, but not through our proper quoting process. So I don't know if these vendors meet all of our requirements. I, I don't know if city administration knows that these vendors meet all of our, all of our requirements, license insured, all that different type of stuff. So we can put it on a, on a card, but I don't know i- if that means that they are or not. So I'm just struggling with this. I wonder if you could tell me why administration is choosing to waive the competitive bid process for this?
So in this specific request, the group had already got quotes to do the work. And so to keep the proc, the process moving forward and be able to complete the work this season, we're looking to use the quotes that they have already obtained. We can go out to bid. Darling Concrete has been a vendor of the city. We have used them before. They're established in the system and they do adhere to our insurance requirements. But if the commission's desire is, we seek proposals, we'd be happy to do that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Was this group not informed of city's policy for purchasing?
It's my understanding that they received the quotes prior or ahead of coming to the commission's last meeting when they requested support. So I think they had already had these quotes in hand. But again, if the commission's desire is for us to adhere to the policy and solicit proposals, we will certainly do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rubenstein?
If this goes out to bid, does city administration feel it could still get completed in this, during this season? I guess how, how long is that process gonna be?
Certainly, we could probably turn it around if we had an RFP that we could get out, you know, by the end of the week. We typically would post it out for two weeks, open the proposals, and then the request would have to come back to the commission as it exceeds the $10,000 threshold, get it coordinated to the next meeting. So it would, would delay slightly, but probably early, or early August, to the second meeting in August. So there'd still be time.
Thank you.
Keep in mind that the bids could come in higher as well. Keep in mind that the bids could come in higher as well. Commissioner Bauer.
No, that's just what I was going to say. Took the words right out of my mouth. I'll make a motion, though. I move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the memorandum of understanding with DISGOLF in Sioux Coalition.
Support.
Motion and support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Bauer.
I move that we waive the competitive bid process and utilize quotes that DISC has received for the concrete tee box work and award the work to Darling Concrete LLC in the amount of $13,500.
Support.
Motion and support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So that one fails. Motion fails. Need unanimous vote to waive the competitive bid process. So that will go back to Clerk's Office. Pardon? Sure, sure. Commissioner Talentino.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't, I, am I missing something here? We got two bids, and Darling was the cheapest one at 13.5, and Melport was at 14,000. Why are we waiving the bid process when we're with the lowest bidder? Am I missing something?
Did we put out a RFP?
The city didn't do the bid process. The volunteers did the bid process. So now we'll have to go back to the city's bid process. So are you?
Yeah, we did get the quotes before coming to, to, to the request. Also, I'd say Darling has equipment that was able to get back to those trails of the concrete that we, we did not.
Okay. Thank you for all the work you're doing. All right, so we'll move on into item six.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration to approve an allocation from SEAL Operating Fund for Sioux Legacy's batting cage project. And Linda Bovee is in the audience tonight. At the September 3rd City Commission meeting, Linda Bovee was approved for the donation to replace the batting cage near LoSi Field and establish a budget of $14,000 to fully offset the donation. Since that time, engineers' plans have been approved for the building permit. The action tonight before the commission would be a motion to approve an allocation in the amount $11,000 from Sioux, Sioux Operating Fund for the Sioux Legacy's batting cage at Malcolm Park Sports Complex. And then also to amend the project budget from $14,000 to $53,000, which would be offset by the completed asset donation. And Ms. Bovee is in the audience tonight, I would say, if the commission has any questions about the project.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager. Any questions for Linda Bovee on this item? Who would like to make, there's two separate motions. Here, Commissioner Bosworth's wrath.
First, I just want to say, Linda, I was at the Parks and Rec meeting, and what you're doing and what you've done to raise money for this is truly amazing, and all the work that you put in, so much appreciated. I know those kids are going to be, and adults are going to be so excited to see this happen. So, me guech. Motion to approve an allocation in the amount of $11,000 from the SEAL Operating Fund for the Sioux Legacy's batting cage at Malcolm Park Sports Complex.
Support.
Motion and support. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Bosworth's wrath.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to amend the project budget from $14,000 to $53,000, which will be offset by the completed assets donation.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion also passed unanimously. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Number seven was a request from Commissioners Habusta and Rubenstein on splash pad rates. So I don't know who, do we have to pick one?
I can start. Uh, I, I know City Manager Chapman's not here, but I appreciate him bringing the possibility of doing this into the future up onto the table. But I think myself and Commissioner Habusta think that it's only right that if, if we're going to do that, to do right by the group and, and figure out a way to, I guess, essentially retroactively credit them for that. I asked a question the other day, and I, I don't know if we'll have the answer for it tonight, of what, what that difference would be between what they paid versus what they would have paid with the bulk rate. So if, if we don't have that answer right this moment, that, that's okay. But I don't know if that got passed through, or if we have that answer yet.
We don't. So we don't have that calculation, nor do we know if our attorney, what the response was from the attorney consultation. So we didn't have a chance to talk to city manager before the meeting.
Do we know if a request has been out to our attorney for that information?
We do not know. So. Want to talk more about it, or wait till next meeting? Put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Or vote on it pending legal approval. I mean, I think either, i- if, if this commission feels that they need more information on the price, then, then, then so be it. But the fact of the matter is that, that this group has overpaid. They've been told by city administration that according to MOU, that never existed, that they would need to pay this much, and, and, and they've continued to pay it. And all along, we could have been giving them a bulk rate, but we didn't ask about the bulk rate because we didn't think it was possible. So I am all for moving forward with this as soon as possible. But if we feel like that has to wait, and we table it for a meeting, then we table it for a meeting.
I, I like the rationale, and I would like to get our attorney's opinion, but I think one more meeting won't have any harm. If you're okay with.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Bauer.
One other comment on that is that if we're going to vote to make it retroactive, it truly doesn't matter if we wait another meeting.
That's a great point, Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah. Good point. All right, so we'll move on into H. City Manager Announcements and Updates. I don't know, there was a request to have an update on the city parks camera systems from Commissioner Habusta, but I do not have that information, do you? So that'll have to wait for next meeting also. So we'll queue both of those items for next meeting. Any questions for Deputy City Manager at this point? We will move forward to item I. Matters Presented by the Public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to item J. Matters Presented by City Commission. Commissioners. Everybody's fifteen.
Actually, one.
Commissioner Bauer.
One thing. And the mayor probably doesn't want me to say this, but I know that he did the bridge walk, and, you know, not that that was such a big deal, but he did hang around and, and wait for the last bus when he did not have to do that. So.
I did.
The first shall be last, I guess.
It was a very nice day. It wasn't too hot, so.
Nicely done.
Yeah, it was good to see you there, too. It was a great walk. And I didn't take the last bus because I was the last walker.
No, he didn't. That is true.
Just to clarify.
He did not. He chose to take the last bus.
All right. Commissioner Rubenstein.
Uh, I just wanted to make a comment. Commissioner Habusta and I, along with some others, had the chance to watch fireworks on the Fourth of July over by Alfred Park, and it was absolutely amazing. I will be shocked if in years to come, Alfred Park is not packed leading into the Fourth of July. So it was really cool and a great view.
Nice. Anybody else?
I'll just add to that. Well done by our city fire department and the work that they did to put on that show as well as, well as Mr. Haller and others who put together our, a great Fourth of July parade.
It was a great day. Mr. Bauer.
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn this lengthy meeting.
Support.